Okay, good to go.
Good evening, Senator. We'll be calling the meeting to order here in just a minute.
Good evening. Thank you very much.
All set, Michelle? Like to call this April 20th, 2021, meeting to order at 6:30. Matt, do you have the pledge of allegiance for us?
Yes.
Thank you. Or the flag, I should say. Matt, you want to lead us?
Yes, with honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And also, if we could have a moment of silence for Carolyn Powers, Tammy's mother, and Vincent Luce have recently passed away. Okay, thank you. Jenny, roll call, please.
Matt?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Tammy?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Heather?
Here.
Marty?
Marty? Marty?
Must be muted.
No, it looks like we lost him.
Oh, I'll see him.
He looks frozen. Well, I will ring him while we are... Motion to accept the regular council meeting minutes, but there's a couple amendments that have to be made on... If everybody will go, we'll start off at the easy, on the last page. Tammy Myers for Finance and Safety. Second sentence, where it says Finance talked about the 2020 budget. Should that be 2022 budget, Jenny?
Yeah.
And then also go back to the page before and do the chief's report. It said, harder plumbing and installing touchless fixtures. We were awarded an MTD and on an ACJ grant. Are we still holding to, if we don't know what an acronym is, we are spelling it out?
I didn't know what it was.
Well, then I guess we should make a motion so that the MDT is Mobile Data Terminal and the OCJS is the Office Criminal Justice System. And that's all I have unless somebody else has something else.
Yeah, OCJS is Office of Criminal Justice Services. Rather than type that out, a lot of us just refer to it as NOCJS, and that's my fault. I probably forgot in the safety meeting.
Marty, are you back with us? Marty? Okay, I can hear you on my phone, but I can't hear you on the computer. Okay, do we need to have him on the phone for the meeting again?
He can participate on the phone. It's, hopefully, the feedback won't be too bad.
Hopefully. I'm trying to dial him back.
Mayor, can he call, just call in on his cellphone to the phone number in the Zoom meeting? That way, at least he'll be on, I don't know if that makes a difference, if it doesn't give you the echo back then.
We would be able to hear him, right?
He'd probably have to turn the volume down on his computer so that his phone doesn't hear the computer, and that's where we get the feedback.
Okay, Marty, you can, you can hear us now, but we can't hear you.
I wonder if he's got his...
Marty, can you hear me? On the computer? Okay, he's not giving us.
I wonder if he's muting himself and don't know it.
Tell him to drive up to the village hall.
There you go.
Gene said, I think he just needs to forget about the video and just call in on speakerphone, and I think that'd solve a lot of his problems because it sounds like his computer's freezing up.
Or he could also, if, I mean, like, I'm on my cellphone, I'm on twice, obviously, but once for my cellphone, so I can talk and have video versus my computer. So I just click that little link that Michelle puts in the email, and it literally pulls it right up. But of course, I'm on my Wi-Fi at my house through my cellphone. But that would probably work for Marty as well, if he can hear me.
You're assuming he has a smartphone.
Oh, yeah, true. I like you.
You see how she whispered that, right, Gene?
As it's been recorded. She goes...
It's like we're in person, Gene, that's all.
I can't wait to meet you guys in person for the real time.
All right.
I think we're making progress. It just shows he's muted now. We lost the video.
Okay, he is going to put his jacket on and come up, and he's gonna sit in here with me. So we will continue on until he gets here.
Okay.
Senator, sorry about that.
No problem.
Could I have a motion to amend the march minutes, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Marty? Oh, he's not. Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
A motion to approve is amended.
I'm moved.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, everybody, this is Senator. He had asked to visit our meeting tonight, so I will let him have the screen for a few minutes.
Great, great. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. So I'm Jerry Sereno. I'm your state senator. And I've been spending the last couple of months, actually, getting out to various city council meetings, boards of trustees meetings, to let everybody know what's going on here in Columbus to some extent, as well as to find out what's, what are issues that are important to those in the various communities. So what I'd like to do is just give you a quick highlight of some things that we're working on in Columbus. I'm down here now. And then also entertain any questions that you might have regarding any particular issues. And I'll start with the transportation bill that we just passed right before Easter. It was an $8 billion bill that covers the two years, the biennium budget for the state of Ohio. And Parda in Portage County was a recipient of many, will be a recipient of a lot of the funding there, as well as Lake Tran in Lake County, which is also in my Senate District 18. And this, this was a very important support bill for public transportation because the governor's budget that was sent to the House of Representatives first, which then went to the Senate, had a significant reduction in public transportation support over the previous years. And working with our colleagues in the House, the Senate was able to reinstate the dollars for public transportation, basically to get them even with where they have been for the last number of budget years. And I know that both Parda and Lake Tran were very thankful that we were able to do that so that they can continue serving the people in the communities in both, in both counties. We are currently working on the, the biennium operating budget or the general fund budget, which statutorily, we have to complete that by the end of June, which we will. And the House is passing their final budget bill tomorrow. And then it will be coming over to the Senate. We've already started hearings on major components that we know about. And we will be hopefully arriving by the early part of June to a consensus and adoption of a budget in the Senate. And then that goes to a committee that, conference committee between the House and the Senate that will reconcile any differences that we have there. The, if I, if I overview the budget for you, it would take a couple of hours. I won't do that to you. But there's a lot of spending and a lot of programs that I believe are very good. There is some spending that will likely be proposed that I might consider wasteful. And we're going to give a very thorough look at all of the spending that is re, is being proposed in the budget. We have a final stages of Senate Bill 80, which I happen to be a co-sponsor of, along with Senator Gavirone, and that bill will, will require for the Supreme Court justices in Ohio, the Chief Justice included, and all of the appeals courts in Ohio, that on the general election ballot, that they would have to include their party designation. We, we have, this has been an issue that has been, has bothered me for many years, way before I ever got into a office, because we have a significant drop-off in voters from the top of the ballot down to the judges. And it's like between the, if we look at last year, the presidential balloting, what had, had, there was an 18% drop-off of people voting for the president versus the judges. And Supreme Court justices and appeals court judges are typically not very well-known to the community, to the average voter, which is why many of them drop off and do not vote for those offices on the ballot. And by the way, I would add that for some who have said that politicizes the judiciary, it really doesn't because, you know, in order to get on the ballot in the first place, judges have to go through, or candidates have to go through a political primary and designate themselves as a Democrat, Republican, or independent. And then when they go to the general ballot, they don't have a designation. So we think that this will encourage more people to vote for judges, particularly at the, at the state level and the appeals court and Supreme Court. And we're very excited about that. We think it's, it's headed to passage, and then it'll go to the House for their review. And we are pretty confident that they will concur with us on that. Also, in the current budget that we are evaluating, there is a, you may have heard from some of your school superintendents in the area that the, the educational funding bill has, has been through the House and will be a part of the budget that we adopt in June. It's a major overall to educational funding as a result of the Supreme Court, I think in 2007, determining that our method of financing schools is unconstitutional, and that has not been resolved since then. This bill is expected to try to resolve that. It has some excellent components to equalize how we fund schools. The problem is, is that if you add up all of the elements in the bill, there's a $2 billion shortfall versus what we're currently spending. And so we're going to be evaluating that and finding out what we can accommodate and what things we might not be able to accommodate or to stretch the time period. But overall, the idea is that it will correct some of the built-in inequities in how we fund schools around the state of Ohio. I would also mention Senate Bill 135, which is my bill. I am the sole sponsor of this bill. We start hearings on it tomorrow, and it's intended to, it's the Higher Education and Workforce Development Bill. And I am co-chair of that committee in the Senate. It's, it's 67 pages, has a lot of elements. I will not torture you by going through all of them. But I will tell you that it is, it is designed to increase better outcomes in our four-year institutions. Graduation rates need to be improved at, at most of the institutions. We're talking about making education more affordable and accessible, strengthening community colleges and career centers like Maplewood, for example. And also making sure that more of the institutions are more transparent in terms of helping students and their families make proper decisions about universities in Ohio and community colleges as well. It's a very comprehensive education reform bill. We haven't had one in decades in Ohio. And I'm quite excited about this one and believe it'll benefit, certainly the state of Ohio, will certainly will benefit us in, in the 18th Senate District because we have many institution, educational institutions in our community here. The, the last thing I'll mention to you is that, you know, I, I really define my role as your senator to, to serve the constituents. And that just doesn't mean that I stay in touch with elected officials. That's an important part. When I was commissioner in Lake County, before I became a senator, I made it a point to work very closely with mayors of the cities and the trustees and city managers and township managers to, to really understand their needs and how we in the county could help. Now it's a statewide issue. And so you will find me not only very available, but even proactively engaged with you to find out what are the issues you're facing, how we can help at the state level. And when we're back to in-person meetings, which some of the areas are now doing, I look forward to coming back and having in-person meetings so we can get to know each other a little bit better. But, you know, for the trustees and council people around the, the district and the mayors and city managers, I want all of you to know that I'm here to, and my staff is here, to support you, represent you. And I'd like to hear from you as you hear about bills that are being proposed. If you have opinions, and I've gotten many of them already, you know, I'd like to hear from you and get your opinions. We may or may not agree on some of them, but I at least want to know what you think and what your positions might be, particularly on issues that might severely impact your community. So that's all I will go over with you tonight in terms of what we're doing here in the Senate. I am working very hard, trying to work very hard to, to represent Portage County, certainly is the, the only full county in my district. And I drive through Manaway all the time, and I look forward to stopping there more often, except at McDonald's, which I usually get coffee there. And I look forward to, you know, when you're back to in-person meetings, to coming in and, and spending some time with you. So at this point, Mayor and everyone else, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Counsel, anyone have any questions for the Senator?
Well, that's great. That's fine. If some questions come up, my office, I think Mayor has my contact information.
Yes, I do.
And, you know, feel free to call my office or, and talk with my legislative staff or myself on any issues or questions that come up. And again, I'm happy to have had some opportunity to meet you, at least on Zoom, and look forward to meeting you in person sometime soon.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Senator, when you happen to be going through town, if you have a half hour, give me a call.
I will do that.
We could have coffee down at Restoration 44.
I would, I would love that. You know, I, since, since I've been campaigning and since I've been elected, my, my life lives on Route 44 and Route 306. I live off of 306 in Lake County, so I will definitely do that, Mayor. I appreciate the offer.
Okay, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for the, the time and thank you for the introduction.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Okay, everybody can see Marty's here. He's six foot away from me, so he does have our shot, so.
Sitting in the corner.
Sitting in the corner where he belongs, in the corner.
Don't have a dunce cap though.
Okay, so we're moving on to the mayor's report, special events. The Crestwood Youth Softball League sent me in a consent form. They want to have a beer and wine walk on August 7th from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the North Park. They're still trying to get all their ducks in a row. They met with the chief and I and Mary Ann on this. They would port the place off down there, and they would be having wine, selling wine, and they're thinking about possibly some food products. And then there would be, sounded like different tables where things are going on. I told them that I would at least bring this up to you tonight so you have some time to think about it. It's to raise money for the baseball league. Again, they don't have, we just met them last Wednesday, and they're still trying to get everything approved by the baseball people. So that one doesn't really need to prove tonight. It was just to let you know what's going on. Soapbox Derby wants to hold an event this year on June 19th from 7:00 AM to 9:30 PM. I do have their insurance. They will be getting with the chief as far as road closures and all those things. Run away and do all of them at one time. How's that sound? Cinco de Mayo Advanced Rehab, May 5th from 5:30 to 8:30, have their event form and their insurance. So those are the two that I'm asking for approval on tonight. So Crestwood Youth Baseball and Soapbox Derby, could I have a motion to approve those event forms?
I'm moved.
Wait, that was Soapbox and Cinco de Mayo or Crestwood?
It's Advanced Rehab having a Cinco de Mayo 5K race.
Second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty? Heather?
Yes.
Okay, I have another one for just information only. We discussed this last month on the rib burnoff. The date, since last month, the date has changed and changed it back again. Again, it's going to be June 19th. It's going to be on Benner's Green Space on Main Street. He is still, he was supposed to get me the information before tonight. Again, I don't have it, so we'll put that one on hold. But at least you guys know that they're trying to put something together. It's supposed to be 10 different businesses from downtown that supply food, you know, like probably Italianos, the Sub Shop, Jake's, I think Mama Lights is in it, and several others, to have something there that's the same day as the Soapbox Derby. So it might be a good thing if they can get all their ducks in a row for, so I'll have it, hopefully, total information next month. Matt, I will put those two event forms that we did approve in your box for you to sign.
You got it.
Okay, moving on. Last week, we received, we talked about it at... Yeah, what meeting did we have last week? I didn't make it to finance.
We had service and planning.
That was the week before.
Week before.
Okay, well, anyhow, received this email about ODOT PID number 102394, repairs to the Cuyahoga River Bridge. And what this project will do is make repairs to the bridge approach, the slabs, the concrete depth, wearing service, replace compression seal joints, reset and refurbish bridge bearings at both abutments and install new structure identification signs. When this came, you guys did talk about it at finance. I watched the finance meeting. Now that I'm thinking about it. We had no information on it until Jenny and I had received an email about it. And the first email indicated that it was happening this year. It's not going to happen until 2022. So we will be getting legislation before the end of the year to let us know about that. But I did want to remind everybody that we are having a micro surfacing, resurfacing on 44 from 303 to Mel Street. So that will be happening this summer. So we have that. I know this was confusing because, again, we didn't have any information, and Jenny and I are both saying, oh, they don't have permission to do anything because we didn't fill out legislation yet, so. So there's that. Next, moving on to Booker Park Phase 3. Received a letter on March 30th that that grant was approved. Now, the grant amount is for $65,250 plus the match of $21,750 from DMRC, making it a total grant of $87,000 to do the project on the north side of the Ballpark and connecting it to the Headwaters Trail. And this is, again, Phase 3. We have, I talked to, to Rich and Gene, and we're not going to start on this project until we complete Booker Park Phase 2. The guys are diligently trying to get that project done. We're almost done. I'm going to say, hopefully, by the end of the month. You think, Mary Ann? That bearing the weather, snows. Yeah, but they are working on the, on putting the mulch down right now. So, but we'll hold on for a minute. Again, I want to remind everybody that this is a reimbursable grant, so we will have to certify that we have the whole $87,000 once, once we get ready to begin the project. The next thing is the paddling enhancement grant. That's for $49,700, 900, I'm sorry, $45,978. This is a 100% reimbursable grant. We will not hear about that one until June of this year. And again, it will be a reimbursable grant that we'll have to certify the funds if we get it. Just wanted to throw that out so everybody remembers that we have two big projects that pay for upfront. Canada Road. I had Mary Ann send the specs out for the quotes for the 1,600 feet. She gave them a, a deadline to respond for the quotes on that sometime in the beginning of May. I don't remember the exact date. I think it was May 3rd. So we have that. And I continue to work with Portage County Water Resources on the transfer. The biggest concern is that while the property owners are very happy with their prices on their monthly bills, there is still a few snafus that we're working our way through. The county has been coming out. I did receive one letter from Fallen Stebbins on their EAUs. They reevaluated them. Theirs is getting reduced, and they were also to St. Joseph Church, and those were, that one was being adjusted also.
Mayor, doesn't that increase the residents then with AO? Doesn't the EAUs then get...
Yeah, that won't be determined until the end of the year. It'll be the same till the end of the year when they have to redo it, so. So, so far, it's just been those two that have been reduced. Each of them was reduced 2.5 EAUs.
And what is the EAU?
That's the...
Surcharge Units.
It's on page 102 in the agreement that's downstairs in the office. How they determine when a building has more than one EAU.
I just meant for the minutes. I wanted to spell out EAU.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
It's equivalent.
Surcharge Units.
Equivalent Surcharge Units.
Oh, so ESU?
EAU, but yeah.
I always thought it was EAU.
I thought it was EAU as well.
We can take out the EAU in the minutes if everybody doesn't care. It's how they calculate the surcharge. Okay, and that's all I have, so we can move on to, do we have citizens out there?
I haven't received any messages from anybody.
Okay, financial report, please, Jim.
We're all ready to receive our federal stimulus money. We had a couple of requirements to meet and we have met them. The financial reports, the funds are stable. Revenues totaled about $72,500 and I'd say more than half of that was income tax. Expenses including payroll came up to about $105,349, which is a normal standard month. We're upside down that way, but we'll make up for it later in other months. And we're slightly under on revenues so far. We should be at about 25%. And we're not, but I'm not concerned about that because some months we get certain payments that even things out. For the appropriations, they look good. We're being under 25%, so that's good. No adjustments were made on the bank reconciliation. And council approved checks 46402 through 46453 in March. And the reason I mention that is for audit, so. I really don't have anything else unless anybody has questions.
Hearing questions, motion to approve the financial report?
I move.
Second.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the Bills of Resolution and the Addendum Bills of Resolution. Open for discussion. If you'll turn to line 34. It shows industrial connections and then it has a part or a model number there. We need to make an amendment to change that. That was a hose for the front end loader. Then on line 45 where it says Snyder Recreation, it says swing hangers. That was under parks. That needs to be moved over to Booker Park Phase 2. And does anybody have anything on the addendum? I, I did have one question that it caught my eye last month and I forgot to ask. How long have we had internet and down at the service garage? Does anybody know?
Forever.
Okay, what about the camera in the service garage?
A camera?
Yeah, there's a camera in the service garage.
Yeah, I don't know about that. That'd be a chief question.
That's not part of my system. When I did the security upgrades, I only did village hall.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's on, I guess it would be Wi-Fi. It's like, appears to be wireless. It appeared to be running. And I just noticed it in the last couple of weeks. So, okay, I just, that was just a question on that. A motion to make amendments. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mayor, is that something we need to disconnect if we don't know who's monitoring that?
I, I will have to have Mary Ann as the village administrator find out who ordered it to be put in there.
Yeah, and then where it's recording to.
Right.
It could be a dummy.
It didn't appear to be, but it might be. Okay, so a motion to, well, let's see. Well, let's, let's do the Bills of Resolution first. Motion to approve line 34 and line 45 changes?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Motion to approve is amended both the Bills of Resolution and the Addendum Bills of Resolution.
I move.
I move.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to legislation. Ordinance 2021-20 and ordinance authorizing the mayor and the clerk treasurer to advertise for bids for residential curbside rubbish and recycling services within the Village of Manaway. This is the second reading. Any discussion on this at this point?
None for me.
Nope.
Resolution 2020-22, a resolution of the Village of Manaway, Ohio, authorizing the adoption of the Portage County Multi Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is the second reading. Did we say last month that we were gonna need to suspend the rules tonight or we're gonna go to the third reading?
That's just suspended rules. That's something we're gonna have to do.
Yeah. I agree.
Let's spend suspended rules and get it over with.
Okay, that's Ben making a motion to suspend the rules.
I move.
And I will second.
Ben?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matt?
No, I don't like to suspend rules.
Scott?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I move.
Second.
Marty?
Yeah.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Ordinance 2021-23 and ordinance declaring blighted area in the historic Main Street Commercial District of the Village of Manaway and declaring an emergency. This was brought up to planning. 44 restorations of the late Larry Cutlip, his, his daughter Teresa Cutlip and James Mockney have all signed confirming that they are willing to work on this project on east side of Main Street in order to apply for the
The grant.
The grant. I was trying to think of the name of the grant and I'm sorry. I was gonna call it the enhancement grant, but that's not what it is. The grant through CB, CDBG in order to Targets of Opportunity Grant. Thank you.
Yes, that was.
For them, this is declaring that section of town blighted area because of the fire where the hardware store burnt down. This allows Dan Tillitt and his group of Restoration 44, Teresa Cutlip and James Mockney to apply through CDBG grant funding on their own to do the rehab on that project. Am I missing something, Tammy, and?
No, no, and it's declared a blight so that they could do it under a blight for the
They are aware that they will have to come up with the matching funds. It will not be a Manaway Village grant and we're, we're just applying, we're just declaring it a blighted area for them to apply for this funding.
Right. Well, and it has to be, yeah, it has to be. Isn't that the way she explained it?
Yes. Yes.
For them to be able to get the, yeah, it was the Economic Development Program.
Do we need to go ahead and pass this? Is there a deadline on this grant application?
Yeah. Oh, and one thing I did forget. I don't think it's specific in here. They also brought up that they are going to also try and apply for funding to do the parking lot. Remember back in 2012, 2013 when they wanted us to do that parking lot in the back behind those businesses, Ben and Marty? You got it wrong. He wants to try and do that. It doesn't sound like that will be approved, that portion of it. So everybody's aware that they want to create 50-some parking spots behind those businesses. Any other questions on this now that I've probably confused everyone?
You did a good job explaining that.
Okay, I have a motion to suspend the rules.
I move.
Second.
Marty?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes, because of the deadline.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2021-24 and ordinance amendment section 331.45 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Manaway related to distracted driving and declaring an emergency. Open for discussion. This was brought up at safety. At safety, they decided they want to change it so you can't even be on your phone within the village limits. Is that correct, Chief?
Yeah, what it is, and I'll quickly read D4. D4 is what we want to remove and then number five would become number four, but D4 in the current ordinance says a person reading, selecting or entering a name or telephone number in a mobile communications device for the purpose of making or receiving a telephone call. So what's happening is we recently had a case where we cited the person for distracted driving and they ended up going to have to get their phone records to go to court to prove that they were actually making a phone call and not texting. While it's kind of difficult for us when they're traveling through the village, we see a hand in the phone and they're manipulating the keyboard. We don't know if they're making a phone call or texting, so we did dismiss the case because they did prove that they were making a phone call. So to take that loophole out of it, we'd like to pass this and then at no point with as many hands-free and Bluetooth and CardPlay. We want basically people to not have their phone in their hands manipulating the keyboard within the Village of Manaway. This is probably something that should have been done in the beginning. And with school ending and more traffic and summertime and more businesses downtown, we want to try to get this moving so that we can take that loophole out. So that, that's what D4 basically says is we want to get that out of there.
Okay, I have an additional request on this and this occurred to me after the safety meeting, so it didn't get included in the Safety Committee recommendation. There's also, part of this section is Section 331.45A, which I will read currently says, "No person shall drive a motor vehicle on any street, highway or property open to the public for vehicular travel while using a mobile communications device to write, send or read a text-based communication." Period. I would like, if you would, for someone to also make a motion to amend that section to include the language, quote, "or initiate a telephone call," unquote, at the end of that sentence. I think that would tighten up the, tighten up the section even further.
Michelle, to clarify, they can receive a phone call and answer it?
That would be correct unless you want to eliminate that also.
Because how would the chief know whether you initiated it or you answered it? You know what I mean?
Again, that would probably be an affirmative defense where the person would have to show their, show their phone record. I, it takes significantly more effort to initiate a phone call than to answer one with, using your hands, but if you wanted, if you want to change it to be to initiate or answer or receive a phone call, that's okay too. I mean, that really that tightens it up even further.
Can I ask a quick question, even though I'm not part of the thing? Just semantic, as being an engineer, I think about the loopholes because that's what I gotta look at. Mobile device, I know means cellphone, right? Telephone, but in today's world, like, like the chief said, like my, you know, my, my Uconnect on my Dodge, it's, maybe if you want to be practically, you could say it's a mobile device. I, I, I know I'm really splitting here. I just thought I mentioned it. I hate to see something be construed out of text, out of context or something, just two cents.
Well, even with Apple Cardplay, if somebody calls in my personal vehicle and I touched the accept button on the radio, that's less distracting to do that than it is, I, and I get what you're saying. Rather than hold the phone up. That's what we're seeing now is people are physically holding the phone, correct? It's not a simple touch of the button on the dashboard. It's they're manipulating or holding their cellular device in their hand while they're driving through the village and they're being distracted.
Yeah. I mean, I just think of like mine, I could dial, I mean, I just say, you know, call, you know, call the mayor and it goes, d-d-d-d, dials it, but on my phone, I can actually, on my, what do you call it? It mirrors it onto my, onto my car screen, onto my dash. And I can actually type numbers. I mean, I usually just have, I just click a button, but I could type numbers on there too. Like, I'm just throwing that out there just as a semantic. I just don't want you to I'm just thinking of many reasons somebody could be like, well, I was typing on my, my car, not my cellphone. I was typing on it because it'll still show it as, if you got the records, I believe it'll still show it as a call that somebody made. And they could say, well, but I wasn't typing on my cellphone. I was typing on my screen because this is literally mirroring that, those images. Does that make sense?
It would still be on their, it would still be on their phone plan as an outgoing call or.
Yeah, but theoretically you could say, they could say, but I wasn't typing on my, my thing here. I was typing on my computer, on my
Yeah, he was hands-free.
I mean, I would like to remove all ambiguity about if a phone call is received, if a phone call is sent, if a text, I mean, for me, two eyes forward, hand on three and nine.
Right, yeah.
If there's anything else beyond that.
Let's run this back through safety with these, all these changes. That's what we need to run it through change, safety just coming up.
Well, the only thing she's adding, Ben, is to
No, 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 I know what she's adding. I could hear. But what I'm saying is we need, what Jean just said and what Matt said and what she said, we need to, we need to chew on it a little bit. I'm just saying that. You can do anything you want to. I don't care, but I, I think we need to think about it, so. And maybe run it back through safety.
And I apologize, Chief. I was just trying to, again, trying to
No, I get it and we discussed it in length. So I guess it's up to council whether they want to make a motion and get a second and put it through or Michelle or with the language that definitely Michelle has recommended.
I'd like to make the motion with Michelle's additional language and also you know, what Matt pointed out with all the, whether, regardless whether it's incoming or outgoing.
So for clarification, Heather, then you would be making a motion, oh, sorry, I lost my document. Where'd it go? There it is. Would your motion be then to include language or initiate or receive a telephone call?
Yes.
Okay. So Heather's moving to add language to section, subsection A or initiate or receive a telephone call. Thank you.
Is there a second to that?
A second to that.
Second.
Heather?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
No.
Ben?
No.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yeah.
So the amendment passes then, Michelle?
Yes. It's a matter of whether you want to suspend the rules and pass it as amended, or just have this remain first reading and have it be on next month's agenda.
That's up to council.
I think we have it on next month's. Sorry, Chief, but with amendment.
Okay, so amended at first reading. Okay, moving on to ordinance. Right off the bat, we're going to have to amend this. I'm going to read it the way it is. Ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-five and ordinance approving and adopting a permanent budget for twenty twenty-two for the village of Manaway after publication of the public budget hearing pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code five seven oh five point three oh. This is first, well. Yeah, it's first reading, but we need to amend it because the heading says twenty twenty dash twenty-five. On, on your agenda, it's correct. On the actual legislation, it's incorrect.
I'll make a motion to amend.
Thank you.
A second.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that Jenny has plans to have a workshop before the council meeting in May at six P M. Does any discussion on this tonight?
Joe found somewhere that we were off by thirty dollars. Let's see, it'll be on page one of the working papers. Under police operating in twenty twenty-one appropriations, it says nineteen thousand nine seventy, and it should have been an even twenty thousand.
Is that correct, Chief?
That is. And that would bottom total to five eighty-seven.
Motion to amend it to twenty thousand.
Is there a second?
A second.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Marty?
Yeah.
Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
We're going to have a, we're going to have a budget workshop at six o'clock next month. We can discuss everything. Then we've been discussing it for years almost.
I think a half hour is probably enough without the water and sewer.
I agree.
Everybody fine with that, Scott?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Moving on to department heads. Chief Russo?
Good evening, everybody. We had, did have a safety meeting on April seventh.
Excuse me a second.
And we called the meeting to order at six o'clock. We elected a chairperson. Thank you, Heather. We accepted March third minutes. We went over the appropriation status, the vendors and the SRO report. We had no citizens. Under old business, we discussed the armor, harder plumbing in process of installing the tough touch-free fixtures that's completed. We were awarded one M D T mobile data terminal on an O C J S grant. The Office of Criminal Justice Services. The speed limit was discussed on High Street. Again, old news. We don't control that county does. We had nothing else under comments or old business. Under new business, we discussed the distracted driving ordinance, which we've already discussed. Traffic enforcement concerns. We had a resident that had some concerns about enforcing traffic on Main Street. Personnel, we did interview for a part-time dispatcher position, and we discussed moving auxiliary to part-time. And then we're discussing the process of adding the options to add a full-time police officer. And we are working on another grant for another mobile data terminal, and that one's going to be a ninety percent reimbursement. So items recommended to council, three thirty-one point four-five, we have already covered. I'd like a motion second, and we need to vote on, it was to bring forward to move auxiliary John Fudella over to part-time status.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yeah.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And the last thing we need to handle is we're, there was another grant, and we were awarded this one. And it is, again, an O C J S grant for another M D T, and that would complete, we have all new computers in the cars. This one is a ninety percent reimbursement. And so the project total is going to be a little over forty-three hundred dollars. And then, of course, we would be responsible for four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So I need a motion and to push that through because it's over three thousand to go ahead and move forward with that.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Marty?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And as a follow-up, we should be receiving the money. Patrolman Dunn talked to Jenny this morning, and we should be getting the monies from the other one within a few weeks. There was a hiccup because of COVID, and the project got delayed a little bit. But we'll be getting the money from the, the last one that we were awarded, and then we'll be going after this ninety percent reimbursement. We had nothing to go to finance, nothing for parts or service. We had nothing table, no executive session. We made a motion to it during the meeting at six nineteen, and our next meeting is scheduled for May fifth. And one thing that's come up since then, just to keep everybody in the loop, I have a tentative list for the Crestwood end of the year events that they're having, and I'll have more information at the May council meeting, which will be May eighteen. But it looks like they're possibly going to be having something for the seniors again, as well as kind of simulating what they did last year, similar to that, where the fireworks and some other events. But before the May eighteenth council meeting, I'll have some of that buttoned up and have more details about that. But other than that, that's all that I have there.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the minister, Mary Ann Fabian.
I put my report in the council packet. Does anybody have a question on that report?
No question about the report itself, but I just want to say the, the content is fantastic. I like how you list everything out. That's great, but there's almost too much information. Can you maybe categorize it?
Maybe.
But, but that is, that is fantastic, though.
Yeah, it is great.
Okay, thanks. Um, I do have a couple other things. I'd like the count, the council's authorization for seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and two cents to pay Paul for twenty-two point sixty-six hours, and Liz for thirty point fifty-eight hours for the week they were on mandatory quarantine. This is based on the average number of hours worked of the past six months.
So moved.
A second.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, and also in your packet, you had a quote from Dan Wozninski, I think he's, how you pronounce it, for the time capsule quote for fifty-two hundred dollars. That is part of risk management repairs. Since that's over my three thousand dollar limit, I need council's approval.
So moved.
Second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And just so everyone knows, we had that eighty-five hundred dollars in the parks improvement plan. We used a thousand of it to, or we're going to be using a thousand of it that you guys approved back in February, I think it was, for Booker Park Phase Two for the engineering fees. So I had said to Mary Ann that we should use the fifty-two hundred for the time capsule out of that fund also. If council has no problem with that.
No problem here.
Do I need a motion on that, Michelle? On which fund to take it out of?
That's a great question. Jenny, what fund would you normally take it out of?
As long as it's appro, there's appropriations, which I'm looking at right now. If the money's appropriated, they can use it.
Okay, then I don't see a problem with it as is. Okay, and the last thing I wanted to bring up, we brought it up at service, but I wanted to bring it up at council, is Dave met with the SEAL Master Crack people, and that's where you put the warm tar into the roads and you, you know, maintain your roads for longer. It's an annual maintenance system extending the life of the existing asphalt on the pavement. We got a quote for between two hu, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and three thousand and seventy-two dollars. I talked, I also talked to the gentleman, and service had some questions. It would be ordering forty-eight hundred pounds. The machine comes with that purchase of the, you know, you rent, you don't rent it. It's free. It's part of the money that you pay for the material. Forty-eight hundred pounds goes about three to four miles of a one-lane road to the center lane, center line of the road for average wear. It will go farther, obviously, better condition roads, less on worse condition roads. They suggest that you don't do it in the heat of the summer, so you do it, you know, before June or in the fall. So this wouldn't be something we do until fall. The company trains the personnel three to, three to four hours until they know it. The machine is all-inclusive. It has the the air compressor right there. He said it takes a minimum three people to do it, but we figured four was optimal. We reserve it on, they, they work around our schedule. And I really think this is a great idea for the village. Of course, we would have a plan of what roads we would do. It would be efficient. It would be, I think it's important that the village pursues this. I think it would save us a lot of money on our roads in the long run. They would last a lot longer.
Mary Ann, how many miles of roads do we have in the village?
I don't, I, I don't know.
Around thirteen point eight miles.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, I thought it was less than, I thought it was like around nine, but, but remember, this is three to four miles of a one-lane road. So really, you're only talking, if they talk about two-lane road, you know, it's half of that. So let's say thirteen, right? But you.
One just thing for Randy at service.
We, we, that's why we wanted to bring it up to you guys, Ben. We think it's a great idea. I mean, anything to stop the freeze thaw, you know, or if it.
I, 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 I'm aware of what crack seal it is. That's what it's called, but the cost of it is going to be strong because of, if you're talking about three or four people paying them about an hour, and then the machine stuff, you know, it's going, the cost is going to get pretty high.
Well, the machine itself, as she just quoted, was, is about three grand. But yeah, then we, we need to figure in the labor, you know.
Yeah, it's cheaper than replacing asphalt.
I agree with crack seal. And I've been trying to get them here to finish the crack seal for the last twenty years or so.
Well, this is, and this is nothing.
I agree with you, Randy. It needs to be done.
We don't need to make that decision tonight, but what, I think what we need to do, I mean, I think everybody just needs to kind of look at the, look at the big picture in the village while you're out and about. Just, you know, just take a look and.
Question, Randy, how you going to crack seal between Elm Street and forty-four and Maple? It would take two or three, two or three tons per lane just to crack seal that park. Actually, that park should probably, should have been paved before the West Prospect Street. So that between Elm Street and Maple is where, is the worst part of Prospect.
We were thinking about paving only the roads that have, that have been paved in that, we were thinking about selling the cracks in the roads that have been paved the last seven years. If they're really bad, it wouldn't be worth doing that on there. They'd have to be scheduled to be.
Crack sealing between Elm and Maple wouldn't be worth it. You need to grind, you need to do a mill and field down through there.
And what Mary Ann is saying is only the roads that have been paved recently, not Franklin Street that hasn't been touched yet, would be cracked sealed. So it would be Prospect Street that was done a couple of years ago. It would be Elm Street or Oak Street. It would be Woodford Street, Herald Street, only the.
Understand that.
Well, no, you don't because you keep saying Franklin between Elm and Maple, and that we have no intention of crack sealing yet.
Well, no, I won't say, and that what I was saying was an example of, of, of a bad place that should have been cracked sealed years ago.
I don't disagree with you.
Oh, I think it's worthwhile to consider, since it's a contained smaller project, let's, let's try it, see if it works for us. And if it doesn't, then we'll maybe consider other, other options. We won't know until we try.
This will give us the summer to, to evaluate, you know, where do we start? Because it needs to be run efficiently. And I mean, the guys know that. Dave knows that. It's like, we're going to have to make a plan, and this is what we're going to tackle, and they're just, they've got to just do it because it's going to need to be like a well-oiled machine, or it's going to cost us too much, you know, so. And they know that. I mean, they know what they're doing. They, they understand.
That's the reason I'll say you should run it through you guys a little longer and get it all straight now.
Yeah, we've got the summer to figure it out, so.
Mr. Weaver? If, if I can offer my two cents just to.
Yes, you can.
When, when they're doing that, one of the things to help, and this will come back from, you know, the service, from, you know, Mary Ann, maybe, I, I'm not sure how you do it, but track their hours, that they work, I don't know, three hours, eight hours, twelve, but whatever those are. But also, obviously, you'll do that, but also for the length of road, not just, you know, from point A to point B, but it was five hundred feet or it was five thousand feet, because what you can do is take all that and aggregate it together and then divide it out. And then, for example, you could always looking and maybe throw a couple inquiries to other companies next year and say, hey, if we had to do this amount of rows that we used, I forget, it was forty-eight hundred pounds, I think, or so, but, you know, and this, and if they said, you know, we, we could do it for X amount of dollars, and you know what you spent, it'd be a good comparison.
Sure would, yep. But we've never.
We have talked to more than one company already. We have talked to more than one company already.
Good.
And my concern is the shoulders. If they're badly deteriorated, they may need additional other work, other service other than crack seal.
Well, Heather, that's why we're only going to be using the crack seal on recently paved.
Okay.
Not older roads. Those are still on the list. Like this summer or this year, we're planning on applying for OPWC for West. Applying to OPWC for West Franklin Street, starting at the end down to Elm. To do it a section at the, at a time, so no, it's not gonna be on, on older roads like, like Maple Street has not been done for years. Or we wouldn't go out on Canada Road right now and do it, because Canada, you know, that kind of. Only on the, only on the roads that we've had paving projects done the last five years or so. So those don't get any worse.
Hey Scott, and one thing, I, I did talk to Mary Ann about how to do some of the lower traffic volume. To safely do those, you know, I mean, High Street, we're gonna have to be a little more cautious because of the amount of traffic. But we're gonna discuss some of the recently side roads, I think we can come up with a way to help them out. And be able to, you know, help curb the cost a little bit.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. So like I said, we've got all summer to make a game plan, but I just think it's something we really need to, you know, really need to look at.
I've been trying to, it's been a strike ceiling for twenty years or better.
Here's the opportunity. If it's stuff in the past that we've been talking about or talking about, or you guys have been talking about forever. And now we have a, a way to move forward and try to preserve what we've invested the money into doing. I think it's a move forward.
Yeah, exactly.
The crack ceiling, crack ceiling is fantastic, but also just kind of keep, somebody's gonna want to keep an eye just to make sure that. They don't go being proactive too much crack filling, I'm not saying you're gonna have a lot of cracks on the seven-year-old and newer roads, but. I've seen roads, just in general, you're driving down and you're just like, whoa, I mean, it's almost like, it's like, it's, it's a zebra just all over the place, because sometimes they get a little. Aggressive on a good side, saying, hey, there's a crack, and they crack it, and the next thing you know, you got cracks everywhere. You get too much, and it can actually, Odont, I think, has something similar happen years and years, years ago. They put down cracks, now they spread it out smooth, and when it got wet on a highway, when people were stopping. Right where the vehicle wheels landed, it actually, people were skidding, it was over like a Beechwood area, so.
It's not good for motorcycles, I mean.
No motorcycles.
Right.
Yeah, in the motorcycle industry, we call those tarts snakes.
Yeah, so I mean, there's training involved, and I'm sure that the company would be training you not to, you know, cover the red and tar.
Yes.
You know.
Okay.
That's all I had, thank you, everybody.
Matt's gonna be out supervising Woodford, is what you just said.
Pardon?
Matt's gonna be out supervising Woodford.
With all the debate that's gone on with this, I think when it's gonna be running, I'll be out there a lot, so, Matt, you don't have to.
That's what I was gonna say, if, if we're short a guy or two, I could drive the truck or something like that, I mean.
You, you'll be busy moving our offices, Matt.
Yeah.
For that last time.
Right.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to village engineer Jean Arders.
Hello, council, so everybody has, I believe, my engineer's report dated April twentieth. And the mayor and the service department has gone through pretty much everything that's on there. So the only thing I would say is, does anybody have any questions specifically?
Do we know if the vet clinic is moving forward, since you've got it on site plan?
If I, if, if we get paid, that'd be nice, yes, I don't know. Is Mary, I can't hear you.
That's because I didn't say anything yet.
Oh, I thought I saw your mouth moving, I'm sorry.
I, I was, I was trying to think what I wanted to say. As far as the vet clinic, the last thing that we had heard from. From them, through one of their representatives, is they were holding off on it now, they had had the property resurveyed. They want to be good neighbors, even though some of their, their neighbors are encroaching on their property. They don't wanna, they just want to be good neighbors, and so it sounds like they're taking a step back. But apparently, some of the neighbors that were complaining about them putting this facility and have encroached on their property and have. Things on, on the vet clinic's property that shouldn't be on there, so.
I do have one more thing that did come up this afternoon, I don't know if, if, if the council wants to hear. Mayor, you don't know about it either, because it just came up a few hours ago, it, it, not, no big deal, I've got it taken care of this regarding Prospect Street Phase Two. Oh, sorry, I said your mouth, I was waiting for a talk, um, real quick, there's a hydrant in front of Mr. Prescott's house, coincidentally. And it was to be relocated about two, three feet further back, because they're putting in, you know, the new pavement, we're getting ready to put the curb in. And we, we've known, and it's already accounted for, to be moved, however. What has come to light over the last few days, starting late last week, was Portage County, because now obviously Portage County has taken over the water. And the valves are. Hard to turn, kind of like not closing all the way, and so what's happening is, is to remove that hydrant, to be able to accept, put a little. Extension on it and put a new hydrant in, requires that, it's called a watch valve, that's right there within a foot or two of the hydrant. They don't think that water line is restrained. That when they take off the hydrant and they take away the dirt from around it, because that water line is so old. Even the Portage County Engineers Office said, they're afraid that if it kind of gets touched. It's brittle enough, fragile enough, that there could be an issue, that you would have a water main break. And not that that is, I mean, obviously, that's not something we want to see, but if that occurred, we would typically be able to isolate. That section of West Prospect by going up north and down south and turning off the line valves. The problem is, is there are no line valves, and the one that is even, the nearest one does not, the county could not get to close enough. So, let's see, today's, well, what is today's, Tuesday, so yesterday, we, CT and the Portage County Engineers Office. Were, and the contractor, were talking about some alternatives, and we got a price from them. To be, basically put in two new line valves, one at the far, far north side and one at the south side. And that would be a cost, I'm just gonna ballpark it, say around like eighteen thousand dollars total. That cost would be incorporated into the budget of the construction, we have a contingency. However, we don't want to use a contingency for something that is going to get replaced in a couple of years, because the county wants to replace that water line. That being said, we did find, just literally a couple hours ago. We were going to actually call you and let you know to be prepared for today, to talk about potentially doing that. But then the county let us know that if we didn't do the line valves, again, other concern that that line is so brittle. Is that it could ravel it, like, it could be a big expense for the village, because again, they're not. It's not to say they're not saying you can't touch it, they're just not recommending you touch it either. And the contractor therefore was getting a little hesitant, because he didn't want to be responsible either. So what we're thinking about, we're having a meeting tomorrow with the contractor, but what we're thinking about doing is, is moving the. Slightly changing the alignment right there by the hydrant. Like, if I didn't say anything, nobody would even know, I bet Mr. Prescott wouldn't even know, driving down that bit, we're just gonna kind of swing the curb, it's not gonna be like a, a curvy. You know, that you would see, we're just gonna move that road about two foot away from that hydrant uniformly, between a couple driveways. And that will allow us to keep the hydrant exactly where it's at, so basically, we're not touching the hydrant. And therefore, we're not touching the water line, because again, if we tried to do those two cut-in valves at the north and the south, the concern is. One of my concerns is, we're now touching the water line twice for a live tap-in, that could open up a can of worms just as easily as trying to relocate that hydrant. So. You know, so we're not spending eighteen thousand dollars again in the contract, but you're paying your portion of that money, so it is costing the village money. And there's a potential that it could open up a can of worm, it costs a lot more money if more water lines gets damaged.
So you're gonna just move the curb out a foot or two.
Yes, and, and just to be clear, Mr. Prescott, is. You would think, like, when I, the way I'm saying it, it doesn't really give full justice, because you would think, if you think of a straight line, you, oh, it's on the computer here. You would think of a straight line, and you go like this, and, and you're like, looking, you go, my goodness gracious, like, like, we do have to do that around, I think, three or four catch spaces. Because they had the mood that catch spaces back, because the water line was in a couple feet too far over the old water line, so you, you, pardon me?
No, I, hey, look, the center of that road, what, what the center line is, is not the center of that road.
Yes, that's true, yes, that's true.
I know, and I was wondering if you could talk to the guys into not running that curb through my driveway. I, I would like it not to be ran through my driveway, if, if you got to, if you got rear-wheel drive in the winter time, you can't get up that hill if there's two inches of snow. You need four-wheel drive or all-wheel drive to get up that hill. If the snowplows came by about four or five days in a row, and it has an inch of an inch of ice, you can't get four-wheel drive up there. I was just like, if they don't have to run the curb through my driveway, it would be nice.
Okay, but. But what we're doing is, so we're just gradually, because that's where the road kind of curves, we're just gradually taking it a little bit, swinging it a little bit more. It's still within the, basically, the area that it is now, nobody would be the wiser that it has moved over a little bit. But I did want to let the council know, yes, Ms. Paisley?
Have fun with me.
So Jean, my question is, okay, so the council owns a bunch of old, old water lines, that they know need repaired now. And they're saying it would be on us if that was a problem, if it broke down the line, because they know they own these old water lines, right?
So, I don't know the ins and the outs, unfortunately, me personally. Because, you know, Mr. I Felice, you know, with the mayor and everybody else taking that, I, I know there was some kind of a budgetary amount of money. That the village, I believe, and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. The village is, has a certain amount of money to spend, and I'm saying I see you have the money, but you have to help, I guess, with some of these. Future short-term repairs or maybe replacements, a contribution or something of that nature, I could be completely mistaken on that, though.
What you, what you're saying, Jean, is, is replacing the water lines is on the needs list. And yes, that's what the third charge is for. The county was going to try and address these problems while we were up there this year. Doing the storm sewers, but because of, of Jean Roberts leaving and other issues. That they were left shorthanded, they didn't have time to have someone put the plan together before our start date on March fifteenth. But it is in the long-range plan to have those water lines done, just, they just don't have the money right now. They don't, I'm sorry, it's not that they don't have the money right now, I'm sorry, they didn't have the time to apply for funds to do so.
And you know what, I forgot, because we're on Zoom, can I share my screen real quick, because I can show you exactly what it looks like. Probably take, just to help, if that's okay?
Quickly.
Okay, real quick. Okay, let's see if it pops up. Okay.
That looks like a dirt bike to me.
Yes, my son, so, north is up, here's Mr. Prescott's house, I believe, over in this vicinity somewhere. And if I zoom in, if you can see my little hand here, this light gray thing right here, that's the hydrant. And I'm gonna really zoom in here, the blue line that you see, that's the front of curb and the back of curb, that's where it was designed to go. And the idea is the hydrant was getting relocated back here a little bit. And the, the, you can't really see it, but there's this light gray line right underneath where my hand's going, that's where the pavement is now, it's only like a foot and a half away from the hydrant. And so, again, we were putting the curb here, and we were moving this hydrant back here, but if we keep the hydrant where it's at. What I've done is, is this red line that you see, let me zoom back out here. So basically, from right across the street from Mr. Prescott's house, I believe, there's a driveway here. And there's a driveway down here at the south, and what we're doing, as you can see, I'm just kind of swinging the two red lines, that's the curbs. Still maintaining the exact twenty-one and a half feet width, I'm just swinging it out a hair bit. You would never notice it driving, but what it does is, it allows us to keep up here that hydrant and not touch it. And then in the next, whatever it is, six months, two years, whenever the county does move forward with that water line replacement job. This hydrant is not, basically, it's actually saving you money, because we're not having to pay, we already have in the contract to relocate that. So that's a savings, and the, the beauty is, is we don't have to spend this eighteen thousand dollars that would need to be put in. And it's only temporary, because when they replace the water lines, ultimately, those water lines. Valves that would be down here and way up here would be for not, like, they would be removed later.
So what you're saying is, we could pay the eighteen thousand dollars now, and we'd be basically peeing it away, because the county is going to be redoing it again.
Yes, but, but let me, but do, let me put one, there is one very good, very good positive to it. And that is, and this sheet doesn't show the whole street, so I'm just gonna point here and say, if we put a valve here, the idea is we would put it that further down. And if we went all the way up to the north end and put a valve up there, yes, it will be basically thrown away for the, in two years, but. It gives you the ability today, if there's a water main break, or God forbid, somebody hits this hydrant or any other hydrant, I mean. Theoretically, somebody could hit that hydrant last, like, three months ago, and you would have an issue of this entire water line, like, having to shut down. You know, I'm not sure where, but what streets, but you would have a larger impact, so the two valves for eighteen thousand, and again, I rounded those numbers, it was like seventeen, eighteen, nineteen thousand. It would give you at least in the next six months or two years, or whenever the county, because we don't know when they're gonna do the water line. It would give you at least control over that set of houses in that street. But again, we could do, unfortunately, just as much damage trying to put those line valves on, because we would do it live, you know, that's, it's called the live tap-in. And again, we could potentially cause just as much problem too, I mean, it's, there's no win situation here, except for the replacement of that line. And I apologize to drop this on you, like I said, we, we worked this thing out this afternoon, in the meeting with the contractor tomorrow, to, to see if this is feasible, but this looks like the, the best. You know, the lowest cost, not throwing away, I don't wanna say throwing away money, because again, but if you had, you could have a water main break in a lot of parts of the other parts of the city that have older, like on Franklin. You know, that water line's only a four inch, so somebody hits a hydrant there, you're probably gonna have a similar issue, hence, you know, we're trying to get these water lines replaced.
Well, I have spoken with the county as far as when we put our plan together for Franklin Street, they are going to be on board to. Also work with us, so that we're not spending money paving and replacing storm sewers. They want to be able to do their sanitary and their water line replacements on the Franklin Street area that we're gonna be applying for, so. Are the, is the county going to be there? Don Mako or whoever from the county gonna be at this meeting tomorrow?
No, there's no, there's no official meeting, it's gonna be, you know, Chris from our office, meeting with the contractor to show him that sketch. The village, or sorry, Portage County, specifically, she sent us an email today, I believe it was this morning, saying it was up to the. The village, again, you know, it's up to the village to do this, but they did say that it was just a matter of if some damage occurs, though, that there would be, like. The county would not be responsible for it, and that's what kind of, like I said, kind of. So the vil, Portage County is kind of like, even those their water lines, they're saying, you could do what you need to do. If you want to put a line valve in, if you want to leave the hydrant, we wanted to leave the hydrant in the curb as it was. But that hydrant would therefore be actually inside the new curb, which obviously would be a very bad thing, because it's a guarantee, somebody's gonna hit it. And we could put ballers on the other side, but again, it's right against the edge of that curb, and it's only a twenty-one and a half foot road. So I could just see, you know, the, you know, the chief out there constantly for accidents hitting that hydrant, because it's so close to the road. And that's why we're moving that road away.
So what you're saying is if we decide to put these two basically shut offs, my words, not yours. Down from that area. And then we break the water line. The county has told you basically that we're up up that road without a paddle. Because we don't have a water fund to dip into to help defray any overages of the eighteen thousand dollars. So that would come out of our general fund, is basically what you're telling us. Council has to decide if we're gonna roll the dice. And not do anything. And leave it for the county to do when it happens on its own later or something else happens. Because once we touch it, we're responsible, basically is what you're telling me.
I guess I think you should reroute the curb.
Yeah, let's not touch those lines.
Don't touch the lines, and and I think you've covered with a great contingency plan in a short period of time.
Well, again, I was trying to, I was getting married, I was on a coffee, then it was like one thing after another, and I'm like, again, it's. I kind of looked at it and I juggled it, because obviously, you know, like Mr. Prescott, right? I mean, he doesn't want to lose water, somebody has to hydrant, but I'm like. It could become a snowball effect of affecting more people if somebody, we try to cut that line valve in. I mean, well, you know, we have the cost, I mean, we can cover the cost in the project, but it's just a matter of.
Blows out.
Yeah.
So council needs to decide, but let let me make council aware, I don't have it up in front of me. I don't know if Mary Ann can bring it up on on her screen. We received an email because the county is going to be in replacing um valves. At starting this Friday and for the next week on Main Street, so that they will have more access to having, being able to shut things up. They plan on doing most of these valve replacements um lines. Uh because they can't shut them off. So I think we need to move forward on, my opinion, move forward on the Prospect Street, move the curb for right now. Let the county replace the valves they have to, and when they get to Franklin Street to replace the water lines, they can do it then. Or if there's a problem that they have initiated, then it's of them and not us. That's my thoughts, but. Make that decision.
And I don't know where, and I didn't, I don't know where the locations of the live valves that they're putting in, you know, like hot tapping those. So I don't know if that includes over by West Prospect at all.
Mary Ann, can you bring that up and all that email that showed all the places, listed them all?
I sent it to Michelle so she could bring it up on her computer, but West Prospect is on there. Um, on April twenty-seventh, complete repairs on line, line valve and begin backfill and preparation for asphalt. It says on West Prospect.
But what, what, you know, how far?
And also, also, April twenty-third, West Prospect, westbound lane closure during work periods, requires signature. So uh East Prospect, they're doing. Um, I sent it to Michelle because maybe she could um share it. Uh without, without any of my uh other emails that are attached to it.
Okay, uh. Mary Ann?
Yeah.
The one on on West Prospect, was that forty-four seventy-one, West Prospect? Wasn't that East Ohio Gas, not the Water Company, not Portage County?
Uh, this does not have a address.
Okay, because I know that forty-four seventy-one West Prospect is getting a gas line or something replaced or repaired.
Yeah, this doesn't have an ad, an address. Did you get it, Michelle?
Yeah, I got it, but there's a lot of emails here. Which part do you want me to share?
It's the one from um Don Mako, uh, Don Van Meter on April twentieth at twelve twenty-eight P M.
Okay, that's.
It says good afternoon, yeah.
Yes, hang on, so.
Don't share my dumb questions that I sent out to.
All right, I'll try, I'll try to do this um Zoom meeting, share screen. Come on, screen.
And this email was just sent us, was just today or yesterday, wasn't it?
It was today at twelve thirty, around twelve thirty.
Where's it going?
It's coming. There it is.
Okay.
So scroll down. A little farther. There's the, there's the dates and the places.
They were, it starts on Friday, the twenty-third, on what the places with where they're going.
Yeah, and then down on April twenty-seventh, it says West Prospect also.
Can, can you support that to me? You don't need to do it now, but and I can coordinate that. I apologize for not knowing about that. Um, I did not know that they were doing it.
Yeah, I'm doing it right now, Jean.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you, on Monday, they're just.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jamie.
On Monday, April twenty-sixth, they said, talked about Main Street southbound, and they say cover excavation with steel road plate. Or is it later on that they're replacing that road?
Well, they're they're probably putting a a a plate on it, maybe for overnight if they don't get it all done. Uh, just like they had to put a plate on it out in front of us, even when they backfilled it. Because of the heavy truck traffic, they still had to put a uh plate on it till everything settled.
Move, move, move down real quick to April thirtieth. I'm sorry, April twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
Got it, okay.
I I think that's the part, what they're gonna do is, because with the asphalt that comes out of, you know, the truck. They'll basically come out and they'll just go bing, 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 and they'll hit all these multiple locations at one time.
Perfect.
Can somebody send that to me? Because I see a section where it says we'll contact Manway PD officer. And we're, they're, I'm gonna need to assist in something.
The police department definitely needs to know, because there's gonna be multiple places.
That, that's what triggered us to contact them today.
So that they want to know where they can put a pile of uh stones and where they can park their trucks at the, that's what they want from the service department. I sent it, I sent it to you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Send it to Jean, correct? Okay, thanks, Michelle.
Okay.
So those are the areas that the county is gonna be working on, so I guess we need to contact the county again to clarify. The twenty-eighth, the West Prospect Street shut off that they were talking about, Mary Ann, or Jean.
Yes.
Uh, tomorrow morning. I won't be here in the morning, so if you guys make a note, take care of that.
I will. Mary Ann, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually internally with C T, with our project engineer, running the project out there. I'm gonna coordinate with him first, and and that way it takes, you you don't have to worry about putting that on your uh to-do plate. I'll get it, I'll get this figured out, and then I'll either call or I'll probably send an email to you and the mayor.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so to step back. Um, at this point. Council needs to decide if they want to try and replace those valves that could. Snowball owners, or to leave it go and move the road over the foot or so, like Jean said. And leave it for the county to do it a later day.
Say we move the curb.
Just move the curb. No, if 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 he can work it out, they're just gonna move the curb, that's gonna be the most inexpensive way to do it.
Let the county do.
Hey, anything else, Jean?
No, and thank you for entertaining that. Apologize to drop that on your plate at the last minute.
Jean, I just got a quick question while we're all here.
Yes.
The water, water reservoir rehabilitation project on reservoir, are we leaning more towards tower now officially?
I can luckily plead ignorance because I don't know. I know the same thing, I, as far as I'm aware, there has not been um any discussion about that. But you know, I'm gonna put a little note and I will find that out.
Well, thanks, man.
That's the nice thing about being new to the position, is I, you know, with Rich I Felice being here thirty-five years, I can plead stupid and say, hey. And I mean it, but I will find out.
You have an extended honeymoon, yes.
Okay, let's move on. Scott, for service and planning?
Uh, service, I think Mary Ann covered almost all of it, and you have been touching on it. But we decided to talk to council about having Jean work on uh, work on a plan for Franklin Street for next year. So, I just so everyone's aware, we're gonna ask C T to put together a plan to do that. So with Franklin's in, in need of some help, so.
So you probably need a motion in order for council to approve Jean moving forward with it.
We don't even know what the work authorization is, how much they they're charging. We need, we need to know the, the amount of what it'll cost to do that before we do all of that. We have no clue, you talk about the plan and that's fine, but he's gonna charge something for that. So how much is he gonna charge for that? We need to know that before we approve anything, other than that, I'm gonna vote no.
Jean, can you give us the ballpark, or does that need to go through Rich?
Is it gonna, I'm gonna need to speak with Rich to see.
Okay.
I I do know that we started looking into that, actually, just the other day, because there's also um um grants and funding coming through as well, so.
Right.
But yeah, let me, so is the question then to do? Would the question be to um, to move forward with like um the West Prospect? I believe, and again, I wasn't here when they did the actual design, but I remember Rich telling me that C T did a. Um, a pre-engineer, like, we actually engineered those plans so it was shovel-ready to help your. The village get more points in the funding process, O P W C funding, is that what you're asking?
You also did the survey too.
You are correct, yes. Like, so my question is, is is something of that nature, or is this more towards um just a preliminary type plan? To uh to do the O P W C funding? Or both?
Well, Mayor, do you know when the, that grant was due?
Grant is due the end of May, usually this time of year, usually probably in February. We approved C T coming up with a cost for the preliminary application for O P W C. You guys don't want to do it?
Well, no, we need to do it.
I would imagine, I don't, again, I don't know what we charged for the uh the Prospect. I can't imagine it being any, I would imagine it'd be the same thing, if we're, whatever we did for Prospect. Franklin's probably generally the same.
Depends on how much of Franklin you're gonna do, if you're gonna do the whole thing, it's almost as long as Prospect.
You are correct, Mr. Prescott, and actually, you bring up a good point, because Rich and I were looking at the water line maps yesterday. And we see that uh Franklin has a four-inch water line, but it actually goes, and I'm gonna get the street run. But I think it actually extends, one more street, put up my map here, I think it extends past Elm. According to um the the uh water maps. And so, when we, here it is. Yeah, we were talking about taking Franklin uh up to Elm, but I think it actually goes, the water line goes to Maple. That four inch, and then it. Yes, sir, yes.
If it's gonna be, if you're talking about the water line, that's something you gotta work out with the county. We are planning, what service had said was, from the dead end of Franklin, down to Elm Street. To replace the storm sewer lines. On Franklin and the storm sewer line that runs from Franklin to Prospect through Gregor's and Aldridge's Yards.
Right.
And Penn. We were going to work with the county to see if the county wanted to replace their lines for the water and sewer. For that length, if they want to take it further than that, that's on them.
Thank you.
All right, so where do we want to go with this?
By the end of May, we need to get on it, right?
Right. Right.
Costs to doing business.
Exactly.
Matt, what's your input?
Um, I'd like to know how much it's going to cost to plan this out, and I know that we have a deadline. Can we get something by service and like, like, what's the runway after service before the deadline? Like, how much time do we need, or after the next, or after the next council meeting?
Well, we wouldn't have time after the next council meeting.
Wouldn't have time, not that, yeah.
No, if it's truly due at the end of.
Yeah, right, they wouldn't have that time to put together for that, right?
Right. Heather? She's muted.
I I'm, I'm just trying to remember here, Mark, then, um, you've been on here the longest with me. Usually when we do a pre-app, I didn't think that there was a fee to do the pre-app. It was all done usually on retainer, but I could be incorrect. Jenny, do you remember from our minutes, or Michelle? On the pre-application.
I think most of the time, the pre-app was part of the retainer.
Not only that, if they're talking about doing it, they probably already got that. Don't take them, it don't take B R along to do one of those grants, they could do one probably two or three hours.
Again. Brian is not working on these projects right now, that's why we have Jean.
I didn't, I didn't say that, you're not understanding what I'm.
I understand what you're saying, but.
I said, I said that Brian does the grant work. I know that James is working on it, I just heard him. But he's, he's not the one that does the grants.
And just to be, you're correct, um, I will be looking over the grant and working with them on the grant. But I mean, because of my inexperience and, you know, with the village, you will not be charged anything extra for that. I mean, that's all I may, well, C T too, but um if, if we charge, if we didn't charge for a pre-app. Preliminary plan for a pre-app, then I'd imagine it would be the same thing, if it's a part of our retainer. And I I do believe Mr. Prescott is correct, I think that um, you know, we do have a format. I mean, you know, we do these O P W Cs uh funding. So, I mean, it's not like it's, you know, days, weeks, you know, months of, it's not engineering, we're not surveying, we're not engineering.
Dean, let's just leave it at. You work up what your cost estimate to do, the pre-application is going to be as soon as you can. What the fee will be. And we will just have to call a special meeting.
Okay.
I mean, it's eight fifty, eight twenty already. I mean, it's eight fifty, eight twenty already.
Oh, yeah. I will, thank you.
I'm good with that.
This, this meeting's been going on too long already.
That's what I said, Ben. Let's move on. Scott, you have anything else?
For service, uh, no, no, we'll talk about it next month.
Okay, thank you.
What, planning, we've already discussed. We spent the evening with Todd Peet and Lisa Reeves talking about the whole, uh, the Dan Hillit building. So, we've already gone over all that, the parking lot, the slum and blights. Uh, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Marty, for safety, Parks and Shade Tree?
Well, the chief is already taking care of safety. So we're not going over that. Parks is moving forward on the, on the, uh, new mulch and getting prices for, for the repairs that have to be done. And Shade Tree is having a meeting in the building here tomorrow to go over the essays and declare the winners.
Okay, uh, cemetery and border zoning appeals. Cemetery is holding a special meeting tomorrow. Tim Bennett wants to put a memorial up at the cemetery, and so we're meeting. Cemetery Board is meeting to see if they want to move that forward to council for next month. And, uh, we've invited Tom Aldrich to see what the status is on his project for Ruthie and Ruthie's sister. Uh, that's all I have. Tammy?
Um, finance, we discussed it, Jenny just went over the financial reports. The only other things we discussed were, we had chief come in and, and talk about the need for an additional full-time officer. And we went over a public records form and just approved that it was fine the way it was, so, that's it.
Thank you. Ben, regional planning?
No, there was no regional planning. Nothing for regional planning.
Okay.
Everybody else in the county's got ordinances and changes and stuff going on, but we don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Any viewer other business? Anything else that properly comes before council? Anybody need executive session? Motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I'll second.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes. I was gonna say no, and keep you on there.
I gotta put my pulled pork in the microwave and heat it up.
Okay, I'll let everybody know about a special meeting as soon as, uh, Jean gives me an estimate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Hi, everybody.
Good luck, Jean.